If I could have your attention, please. This is the meeting's special common council meeting for Monday, March 19th, 2012 at 6:30. The purpose of the meeting tonight is to share information with the city council and the citizens of Hudson concerning how our library is funded. Our Hudson area library is a strong community asset, and we must do everything we can to understand the funding mechanism in order to find solutions to the problems that we have with funding. Again, the purpose of the meeting tonight is a presentation of the information that we have been able to determine since the meeting on February 28th by the steering committee of the joint library. Our meeting tonight is not a debate of the pros and cons of our library. We will have as many public meetings as necessary so that all citizens can have their inputs, both pro and con. So with that said, tonight's meeting is, our first step will be education and information from our finance department for the city of Hudson as to where we're at. Second thing will be determined by the city council what would be your next step, whether or not we refer it to finance committee, or whether we decide we're going to continue to meet as full council with solutions to the situation with the funding changes. So with that, anybody on the council have any input or concerns, or are you okay with that agenda? Okay?
Okay.
Neil, if you could start for us, please.
Very good.
I think everyone, it was on the website, everyone got a copy of the presentation that was, I think you put that on Friday? Okay.
John, can you turn on the screen, please?
Derek, do you want to poke your head around there and see?
Thank you.
Could be the one under your feet.
Yes, it's the one under your foot. It's the blue one.
The one you kicked.
The one I kicked.
There you go. All right.
For those of you that don't know, Neil Soltis is our financial officer for the city of Hudson.
What I'm going to try to do is take you through, library funding is not always the easiest thing in the world to understand, the whys and wherefore's, and what I'm going to try to do is take you through to get you, really to develop what I'd call a fact base for your future decision-making in terms of how the library's going to be funded. That's the real goal. And to do that, you know, we have to understand where the money comes from, and I think one of the issues we're facing with the county, and probably thirdly, there have been a couple options thrown out there, really what are the impacts of each of those options. In terms of, you know, precision, the numbers that are in the presentation are, you know, again, in concept, they're not going to change much. If you look at, you know, they may vary from year to year a little bit because obviously circulation at the library changes. The cost of running the library and the cost per circulation, cost per circulation is a very, very important statistic. That's going to change every year. But the basic principles, and particularly when we look at the options, are not going to change. I mean, you know, we're not, we're probably, you know, talking plus minus, you know, 5%. So, but you'll get the basic principles, and I think that's what you really need to look at when you're evaluating the decisions. So let's look at how the library's funded right now. And when, when you look at what's in front of you, it's showing the total revenues to operate the library, and these are the, really, the revenues from the municipality. And the one thing I did include in here that's going to differ from the next slide is the payment to other libraries. And I'm looking at this as what is controlled by our joint library agreement. So controlled by the joint library agreement are the first five items there. There's a contribution from the city of Hudson, the town of Hudson, the town of St. Joseph, and the village of North Hudson. But also, in the joint library agreement, there's a provision for payment to other libraries within the county. We make a payment to Roberts, Somerset, and River Falls. And some of that we'll, we'll get into when we talk about the county library levy. But obviously, when this joint library was created, there were people from the surrounding towns who previously weren't served by a municipal library. When they went to the other libraries, those libraries were compensated by the county based upon that circulation. So this is a chance to kind of even the playing field to the other, to the other libraries within the county. So you almost have to look at those as a block. And I put those in a block for the simple reason that those are things that are covered by the joint library agreement. I think the other thing that's very important in there is that there is no minimum funding level set by state statute. It's not saying that we have to be at this point. That's local control, that's your local budget. The other element of revenues, and I'm really only looking at governmental revenues to the library, the next slide I can explain some of the difference, is really what comes from the county. And the county library levy, and what I put a note in here is this is all counties, because if you have, if somebody, and I think the library this year received a couple thousand dollars from Barron County based upon circulation up there. So if we have, if our library's serving residents from other counties, other counties are also paying our library. So of the 79,000 that the Hudson area library is receiving, roughly, I think it's, you know, 3,600, 4,000, somewhere in that range, we're getting from other counties, you know, reimbursing us based upon the cost of circulation to their residents that aren't served by municipal libraries.
Questions?
So that's the 79.
That's the 79. Roughly 75 of that, just ballpark 75 and changes from St. Croix County.
Let me ask a question. So the payments to other libraries is basically, our residents use services of other libraries, we pay them back, other libraries use services from our libraries, so we get paid?
Generally, if, if a resident is, it's really those payments, and you'll see it probably, you'll understand it more when we go through what happens with the county, those are generally, if you think, if you were, let's say, the Somerset Library, and somebody in the town of St. Joseph always went to the Somerset Library, you know, traditionally, they would have received, you know, if, you know, whatever, how many, you know, circulations there were, times their cost, Somerset Library previously would have gotten that money. Now, because they joined the joint library, if you're going from a system that's served to a system that's served, there's no exchange of funds. So we kind of pull, you know, we've taken, when the joint library was created, money was taken, you know, quote, "away from them," and it's my understanding, you know, not that I've been here that long to totally understand everything that went into negotiating the agreement, but it's my understanding that this is intended to compensate them for the loss, because they're no longer getting those funds.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
The next slide really is a little bit of snapshot of the history of the library in terms of revenues and expenditures. And in here, you'll notice the numbers are higher, but one of the things that is, the payments to other libraries are included as expenditures here. The other thing in terms of expenditures, or in terms of the revenue, let's look at the revenue line, we have what's coming from the municipalities, but the other thing that you are going to have here is, you know, that number has inflated roughly $50,000 because you're not netting out the payments to other libraries. But the library also receives funds through fines, copies, that's, let's see what else? Oh, donate, you know, donations, because the friends have made donations, so that's what brings it up to that other number. In this slide, you know, 2010 is a bit of an aberration in terms of looking at a budget for the simple reason that you have the grant funds that were received for the new library, and you also have in there the impact fees that the city transferred that related to the construction and improvements at the new library. But I think one of the things in here, you'll notice that operating expenditures have continued to grow. Included in the increase in library expenditures are, in 2012, it's budgeted that the library will pay the city $126,000 of rent on the building. That is out of the city's, you know, budget, the city has budgeted $202,000 roughly for operation of that building and maintenance. So you look at the library as essentially paying for, out of their budget, 60% of the cost of operating that building. So that is part of that increase. But I think the other thing, and is probably the more critical issue at this point, is if you look at the, if you look at the green area there, the green area represents, what's the fund balance, year-end fund balance of the library, and how much money do they have left to operate? And you can see a fairly precipitous drop, and in 2011, and then budgeted in 2012, you've seen, you know, 80-plus thousand dollars per year decrease, which leads us to the discussion about future funding of the library. Questions? One of, a lot of the discussion has stemmed around what, you know, the county library levy, and, you know, let's, you know, and again, I think this, you know, goes, you can go back to Lee's question before, is what is the county library levy? The county levy funds, the intent is to balance funding for library services by reimbursing municipal libraries, municipal libraries for providing services to residents from outside municipality. You know, when you think of it, I think under Wisconsin statute, our library, because we're part of the library federation, has to serve everybody. However, you have, you know, if it was only funded by the taxpayers of the city, or property of the city, you know, there really is an injustice there. So, you know, what you have is you have the county library levy. Also, it's commonly referred to as Act 150, and that's from a 1997 revision to state statutes. So if I flip back and forth between county library levy and Act 150, those terms are synonymous. What Wisconsin statute says is that counties are to pay each public library an amount equal to 70% of the amount computed by multiplying the circulation to non-library residents by the cost per item circulated. And one of the things that's very important here to recognize is that the county library levy only covers operating costs. It does not cover capital costs. And that's really one of the beauties of having a joint, a joint library agreement, where you have a partnership with other municipalities, where there is a willingness to share those capital costs. Because if you did not have the joint library agreement, you would, you know, the whole burden of capital costs would fall on the taxpayers of the city. And I think that's critical in there.
Where does, where does capital cost come in with the county? Does that come into their funding?
They, they provide no funding for capital costs.
So there's no levy in the taxes?
There is no levy, you know, for that. So, I mean, if you look at how the, you know, how this works for the county levy, if, you know, the town of Troy, for example, is not within the boundaries of the, the joint library district, and I think the number of circs for 2011 to the town of Troy was in the $20,000 range. And let's say each item that is circulated costs our library $2.50. The county, so you have 20,000 times 2.50, $50,000. Under state statute, the county has to reimburse us a minimum of 70% of that, or $35,000. So that's really the basis for that county library levy. Let me go on to the next slide. One of the things in here that has happened, though, is the, you know, when you look at a 70% reimbursement, but that still means that, you know, the residents of the city of, was municipal library, of the joint library, you know, under state statute, could be responsible for up to 30% of operating costs that are attributable to circulation from, you know, people who really aren't paying any taxes into the community. The St. Croix County has increased that percentage that they will reimburse from 70% in 2009 to 85% beginning in 2010, to 100% in 2011. One of the things in here that you look at is that there is a two-year time delay in these coming backs. So what we are getting reimbursed for in 2012 is based upon 31,000 items that were circulated in 2010 at a cost of $2, you know, 42 cents per item. So you do have that time delay there. So a year's over, the library makes a report, the next year, or that year, the county will assess it, and you get the money in the next year. So there, you're always a couple years behind in this cycle.
Is that going to remain at 100%? Or is that just?
That is subject to the county board.
Okay.
How was, I wasn't here at the time, how was the purchase of the library building funded? Through the four municipalities?
No, the city owns the building.
So the city, the city funded the purchase of the building?
Yep.
And they operated?
Through, through impact fees, through, what am I trying to say? Reserve funds, through, we, there was a-
Parking fund.
Parking fund.
Sale of the buildings.
And they op-
The sale of those two built, the First Street Building, or Second Street Building and the Fourth Street Building.
Okay. And we operated at a rental loss because we're only charging the library $127,000 versus $200,000 to operate the facility?
But the police department is also occupying a portion of that building.
Okay.
They pay for the 60% that they carry.
Okay.
Or use.
Any other? Okay. So let's look at who pays the county library levy. The county can levy a tax to provide funds from municipal libraries, not, or for providing library access to residents not served by a municipal library. Again, that's based upon circulation and cost per circulation. And because that is more of a, I'll call it a performance-based number than anything else, the county's library levy is specifically exempt from the current local property tax levy limits that we're subject to. Because, you know, we, you know, you can't control how many people are going to take books out or, or, you know, you know, renew books at the library, you know, based upon the cost. So that's kind of a fluid number that the county determines each year and says, geez, based upon all these, the municipal libraries, this is the amount that we need to levy. Now we allocate it over the municipalities. One of the things in here is that state statutes provide for an exemption from the county library tax levy if municipality is levying an amount at least equal to that municipality's equalized value, which is the market value of everything in the community, multiply the count, by the, the county library's levy rate for the current year. That's, that's a lot to say, but what they're looking at is, they say, are you providing support for, are your residents providing support on an equivalent basis as we're charging everybody else in the county to provide that? One of the things that has happened here is that by the county increasing that reimbursement from 70% to 85%, up to 100%, what they've essentially done is raised the bar and almost either forced municipalities to increase their levy accordingly, or else become, you know, quote, "non-" or not eligible to be exempted from the county library levy. And that's one of the issues that has come up most recently.
Good question. So if I'm understanding it right, now that the county's paying 100% reimbursement, it's no matter what the cost is, they're going to reimburse it?
Based upon operating cost. And I mean, you know, each year, the li-, the library provides an annual report that says, here's our circulation, this is where it came from, this is our cost per circulation. And what they're doing, the county would then, is rely on that annual report to determine what we would get back, really, two years later. Did that answer the question?
Does the circulation number include only the four municipalities, or does it include people who are outside the four municipalities?
What, what the library would report is their total circulation by municipality. What the county would reimburse us for is say, okay, of your circulation, what, what portion of that circulation comes from outside of the municipality, or out, not the municipality here, and in case of a joint library, outside of the joint library district? So they look at that, times what it cost us, you know, per book, you know, in total, and that's what we're going to be reimbursed on a 100% basis.
Is that clear, Asmodee?
Yeah.
So- Our cost of circulation is 264.
I was 240, 241 for, in 2010, I'm not sure what it was last year, but I mean, it hasn't changed that dramatically.
But it makes perfect sense, because then you don't have the city or the joint library board subsidizing people that are using your library.
Right. Which, and that's, I mean, that's really the essence of the, of the county, you know, why you have a county library levy.
You couldn't hear that?
Oh, sorry, I was saying that, that it makes perfect sense because you're not, then the, the joint library or the city library, whichever case it may be, is not subsidizing people who are using books from outside the joint library or outside the city. We'll see if we get reimbursed at 100%.
Right. I think that, you know, one of the other real important things to note in here with regard to the county library levy is that, you know, what comes back to, you know, the Hudson area library? And that is based purely on circulation. I mean, it's, you know, it's circulation to the town of Troy, you know, all the other towns around here, people from other counties who happen to, who use our facility. It's, it's a matter of just sheer math. Circulation by people who aren't served by a municipal library, times cost per circ, that's what you're going to get back. You know, that will not change whether we are exempt from the county library levy or not. Because the county will sit there and for each of the municipal libraries, add up, you know, take that circ, times cost per circ, add those up for the county libraries, and say, this is the amount we have to levy. And then they're going to spread that among those municipalities that are not exempt from the county levy. Eyes are rolling.
Yeah, that's okay.
You want me to take another stab at that one? No? And I think the next slide will probably help show that a little bit in terms of, and this is really the calculation that related to this year. And this year, you know, through the, the members of the, the Hudson area joint library, inadvertently were not, were treated as being exempt from the county library levy, when actually they should not have been exempt from the county library levy. So if you look at it, you, off, off this chart, the value of all properties in St. Croix County is $7.5 billion. If you look at the equalized value of municipalities that were exempt from the library, you had $4.6 million.
Billion.
Billion. Yeah, 4.7 billion. Which means that the, the properties, the remaining properties valued at 2.8 billion are going to be the ones that are going to be subject to the county library levy. Then if you look at, based upon the circ, times cost per circ, the county said, I need, we need to collect to reimburse all these libraries $941,000. And therefore, you, just by doing sheer math, you come up to the county's tax levy. You know, this is, this is what we have to charge, that $2.8 billion, times that levy is going to give us our $941,000. In this instance, the city of Hudson would have been, or should have been, part of that 2.8 billion, and we were roughly half of it, you know, you know, with, within the realm of reason. So therefore, what the county is saying, that the, what the minimum that the city should have appropriated to be exempt from the county library levy was $483,000. Our appropriation for the Hudson area library was 278, so we were, you know, a little bit on $200,000 plus short of qualifying for that exemption. Now, when we talk about what happens if you are not exempt from that, if you're not exempt from that, you know, what it means is, on your property tax bill from the county, you will be charged a different rate than you would have been if you were exempt. You know, and what's the impact on your property if you sat there and took the value of your property and multiplied it by .0003349, you're going to be somewhere in the ballpark of what your tax bill would have increased, had you paid the county library. Now, the one thing with that is you, you know, also, on the city's local levy, you're paying the $278,000. So I mean, that's really going to be one of the issues moving forward. Now, if you look at the scenario where that's based upon $100,000, or based upon 100% reimbursement, we were $200,000 short. Had we been at the 70% reimbursement, that number, I think, is in the 60, 70,000 dollar range, is a much more, you know, more manageable number. But it's, it's really, as it increased from 70 to 85 to 100, you know, what, what has ended up happening is that the city, and actually, you know, I'm only really, only looking at what's happening to the city, but for most of the other, you know, municipalities that are members of the joint library, they, they would have something very, very similar.
Question.
Yes.
So, if I did my calculation right, if the county had not gone to 100%, and had stayed at 70%, we'd be off by about 50,000?
Some 50, 60,000 range.
Okay. Thanks.
Questions?
Lee, go ahead.
Well, I was trying to, and we were exempted from it this year under which clause?
It was through an oversight by the county.
Santa Claus. Okay, thank you.
There have been a couple options out here, and when you look at, you know, what are the, you know, what I want to look at is, boy, you know, what are the options here? And then, you know, what are the impacts of those various options that are available to us? And, you know, one of the options that has come up, you know, was suggested by the library steering committee, was to revert back to a municipal library. So I, you know, you're looking at really, you know, two sets and two subsets. Two sets are we continue as a joint library, or the second set is we revert back to municipal library, and that was the path that was recommended by the steering committee. Within there, you can say, A, you know, being no change to current local funding, and that would be either by the municipalities or by the city as a standalone, or then, number two, what would happen if the local funding were increased to the level at which we would be exempt from the county library limit? I think-
Are we anywhere, do we have any thought of what the other municipalities are looking or thinking of doing?
I think we're just still working on it.
Still? Okay.
But isn't 1A not an option?
No.
No, and we can cover what the impacts of 1A is.
Okay, we'll go through them.
There, there is a very, very specific impact. I think the other thing, and when you look at here, and I, it's important to reiterate this, is that if you went to the, the two set of options where we reverted back to municipal library, you have to remember that future capital costs, again, the burden of future capital costs is going to fall back solely onto the taxpayers of the city. So I think that's something you have to weigh in mind. If you look at option number one, option number one says, you know, there's, we're not going to do anything in terms of changing our local funding, and we're going to keep a joint library. So you have to look at what happens. And what I have tried to look at is the columns on all four options. The columns on the left are really related to what happens to the taxpayers of the city of Hudson. I'm not really looking at what's happening to the taxpayers of the other entities. On the right-hand columns are going to be, how is that going to impact the revenues that are, are going to go to our library? So if you look at that, and in what's going to the library, you can see that I've netted out of there our payments to other libraries that are because of that joint library agreement. So if we do nothing whatsoever, and again, I mean, these numbers are, you know, particularly what we would pay St. Croix County, will change, you know, based upon the, you know, the circulation and how much money they have to collect, it's going to change based upon what the equalized value is, because equal, new equalized values won't come out until next August. So I mean, and that's where you have to look at, there's a certain randomness in these numbers, but they're, they're, the principles are not going to change. So if you look at option number one, you know, what we're looking at is the city of Hudson, if funding stayed at 278, 910, our obligation to St. Croix County under that scenario would actually be $242,000.
Because we wouldn't be exempt.
Because we wouldn't be exempt.
Right.
So of, go ahead.
How would, how would St. Croix County get that money?
They, that would be a levy on, you know, if, if you looked at your property tax bill, the county portion of your property tax bill would go up, and that would be spread among all the property- the county portion of your property tax bill would go up, and that would be spread among all the properties within the city. So, I mean, you know, in grand total saying going for library purposes, the taxpayers of the city would be paying 521,000 dollars, of which, coming back to the city, if we look at the other side, the right-hand side, our 278 is going to go directly to the library. I'm assuming that the other communities are not going to change because this is their 2012 funding level. Of the, so of the 242 that's going to St. Croix County from our taxpayers, we're only getting back 79,000 dollars. And I think that's, you know, that's one of the key is that by not being exempt, we comprise such a large portion of what is not exempt that it has a disproportionate impact upon the taxpayers of the city. Everybody understand that?
Well, and yet, it looks like the library revenue goes up to 656.
656 really isn't, isn't a change. I think where, where do we have it at the start? You know, if you look, it's same as the first slide.
Yeah, pretty close.
656, 519. So that's pretty much the current state.
That's with no increase in funding.
Right.
So under that scenario, 160,000 dollars of city taxpayer money goes somewhere.
The other libraries.
Yes.
Goes to the other library, outside.
Goes to support, and, you know, you know, really, it goes to support circulation to people who are residents of the county and, or from other counties who are being served by the other libraries that are exempt.
Any questions on that? All right, want to go to the next option?
Next option would be.
No, with, with the last one here, the payment to other libraries, you're assuming that, well, that's still part of the joint library agreements.
Right.
That stays in effect.
Right, exactly.
Got it, thanks.
I still have a question.
Sure.
Sorry. How come these numbers are all identical to what we saw on the front page?
Do you want to keep it the same? We're just using.
I know, but the,
We didn't include the other municipalities, uh, tax, all right, we didn't include the other county taxes.
The county funding doesn't come back to the library, the county funding goes.
Right. So, you know, if, if you look at it, if you, if you remember how we talked in the formula, the 941,000 dollars?
Yep.
The 242 would be what we would be contributing
Okay.
to, as a portion of that 941.
Okay.
The next option would be what would happen if we levied sufficient funds to be exempt? And that kind of changes the whole formula a little bit. But one of the things, the main caveat here is the fact that for us to do that, we're subject to a levy limit where the county is not. The only way, uh, that, you know, that I think is, is plausible for the city to exceed that levy limit is through referendum. So, you know, how you get from, you know, that additional funding is, is going to be one of the challenges in order to become exempt.
Just as a side note there, we, uh, our levy limit increase this year was 69,000 dollars for the city.
That's what we were allowed.
That's what we were allowed under the new formula that came, or the formula I guess has been placed for quite a while.
No, it's a new one.
If the new one came in, so we had 69,000 dollars in revenue that we could increase, and we took the whole thing. We went as high as we could. Under this scenario, uh, we would have to come up with an additional, what? 260, 250,000 dollars.
So the diff.
There, let me finish this, Lee, and then, then you can ask the question. The issue is where we, we get that from, he, he talked about a revenue, or a referendum, which I think is a very much a viable option. The other one would be, can we take it from other departments within the city? Because it doesn't have to always be a referendum, but we could look at where we could get that money within our current budget. So I just, for, for those of you that we do have an ability to do that, it would be pretty painful, I think. I don't think there's any department heads that think they, uh, have too much money in their budget, but go ahead, Lee.
Well, just an observation, maybe it's a, maybe it's a very obvious observation, but to the city residents in this scenario, one versus two, they have a choice. They can either pay it to the county and it's going to get paid because your taxes are going to go up.
Right.
Or they can approve a referendum to say, I want my dollars that are being taken out of my taxes to go to my local library.
Correct, correct.
That's what I'm reading these two, so that, okay.
That's exactly correct.
So, so in 1A, if we get taxed to county, we're not guaranteed that that money goes in a library, but in 1B, is it more, is it guaran, we're guaranteed that that, then those taxes would go towards the library? Or still, it's not going to get spread out, is what I'm saying?
Correct.
I think the issue that we have there is if we have a referendum and the referendum doesn't pass, then where's our options at?
If, in these two scenarios, we're going to pay it anyhow. I mean, the, the taxpayer pays it.
Okay.
I, I, you know, I hope there's other options, but I mean, that's, I just want to make sure I was reading.
Well, and, and I think on the other option, you're, you're going to see a mirror of the same thing. You know, it's, you know, in order to get more money to your library, you know, and the, the real hard thing here is if you were trying to get over the 70 percent threshold, it would be much easier. But trying to get over that 100 percent threshold for, for an exemption is really difficult. I mean, you know, that, you know, that's going to be a major, you know, that would be a major challenge.
Does option 1A require a referendum? But then we're not guaranteed that money going.
Well, we lose money.
Right, yeah, I get that, I'm just.
We're not losing money.
No, you're just piping money out to the county.
It's the, the library funding would stay the same.
Right. And I think that, you know, that's one of the things that you look at it is, you know, if you look at what is the Hudson library going to get from the county? And it's purely a matter of formula. It's circulation times cost per circulation, and that's the money that's going to be coming back.
But it's, it's not the same revenue. 1B has 1 million versus, uh, 1A is 656,000.
The operating cost for the library.
Right, now, on, you know, and one thing I have to say in 1B is I made the assumption here, and I, you know, I, obviously, we can't make any commitments for the other communities, but this is more of a what-if scenario, that if everybody said, we're going to contribute enough so that they could, everybody could be exempt. And you can have a mix, because the county has to make that determination between whether you're exempt or not exempt on a municipality-by-municipality basis. So we could be exempt, the others aren't, in which case, you know, they would get the additional 200,000 dollars. But if you look at it, if everybody said, you know, we are going to go to a referendum and we're going to contribute, you know, you know, levy enough money so that we're exempt from the county, the library's revenues would go up from 722,000 dollars to 1,072,000. So you can see, you know, that's, you know, that's a pretty sizable impact.
And that's with all four referendums passing?
Correct.
So you're saying we could maintain the joint library and different municipalities could choose to
Fund it.
fund in order to be exempt or not? Okay.
Well, it doesn't necessarily require a referendum, you can take it from your general fund if you choose to.
Right.
Right, right.
The towns could make a decision that they.
You can take it out of your general fund or you can have a referendum.
But then you get back to the point where the taxpayer's going to pay the full load either way.
But there's a big difference for some of these smaller municipalities in that it affects our levy. It affects how much we can levy in other areas, and I don't think we can assume that the other partners are going to feel like that's a good option.
Questions on this one? Corey?
So if we would have been faced with this this year, we were limited to raising the levy by 69. We would, we would have had to raise it by 204. We would have had to decrease spending somewhere else by 160.
Yeah.
Or go to referendum. Okay.
You know, the option was, you know, just, you know, recommended by the library steering committee, what would happen if you disbanded the joint library? And so the next two scenarios look at what happens if we disbanded? And really, number one, with no increase in city funding, and then what would happen if you disbanded it with an increase in city funding? And again, the, you know, if you look at disbanding it with no increase in city funding, there were a couple of things happened. Number one, the joint library agreement disappears. But then also the payment to the other libraries, if you look at it, remember that's been at the 52,000 dollars, that also disappears because that's a function of the joint library agreement. So if you say, what happens if this becomes a joint library agreement? You know, what you have is the cost to the taxpayers of the city is, was going to be 614,000 dollars. However, library revenues are going to go up by roughly, it's about 60,000 dollars to 722,000. Now, if you look at it and say, you know, you know, where does the increase to the library come from? Number one, you're not paying out the 52,000 dollars. I think the other thing that if you look at it, that, uh, the, we would re, be reimbursed from the county for the circulation for, you know, the village of North Hudson, you know, the town of St. Joseph and the town of Hudson, we would be reimbursed from those. And if you looked at the circulation to those communities in 2011 at the $2, you know, 40, you know, 41 and change versus what they've paid us, it's interesting to note that if you look at here, you know, Act 150 from the county, uh, would be 443,000. Those member communities, their 2012 contributions are 429,000. So, I mean, for all intents and purposes, you know, they're paying in based upon what their circulation is right now. That, that number's going to be somewhat close to the wash, but granted, it's, you know, it can vary based upon circulation where right now, you know, it's fixed. But again, I mean, the thing that, you know, and I hate to belabor the point that by disbanding the library, you're 100 percent responsible for capital.
What would be the capital impact for this option? Do you have any idea?
I, you know, I, I can't say what the library has planned for the future in terms of improvements or whatnot. So, I mean, you know, you know, this contracted with the joint library, you know, what you see is some pickup in revenue, but most of that pickup in revenue is getting rid of that payment to the other lib, the, the other three municipal libraries.
Mm-hmm.
I would, just going back to your question, I would think a lot of the capital impact on the city depends on fundraising.
Yes.
Done by the library.
Another thing to note is that the individual other partners' levies would go down. And their county levy would go up because they would no longer have that on their tax levy, their contribution to the library.
Right.
So they would still be paying the relative same amount, it's just would be coming through the county tax instead of their local tax.
And so it'd give them all a break on their individual budgets.
Okay, help me, help me wrap this back together. In the previous scenario, individually, our St. Croix County levy would go up 242 in 1A, and here it would go up 3, 332. That would be the, back to the individual taxpayer.
That's if we were not exempt.
Right, and why.
For, for some reason, though, you know, when you think of it, all of a sudden, you're adding all the circulation to those other libraries. So right now, the county is collecting 941,000 dollars.
Right.
Okay? We're circulating
Oh, got it.
150,000 items at 240 per item. So all of a sudden, the county is, the county needs to collect 1.2 million instead of 941,000.
Because our joint, our, we're smaller.
If we're responsible for 40 percent of it, our number's going to go up.
Okay.
Make sense?
Yep.
Wrong way. The last option to look at is what happens if we disband the joint library with the increase in city funding? Again, you know, what you're looking at here is, you know, we're subject to the municipal levy limits. You know, but, you know, again, you say, where is the funding going to come from? You know, now to be exempt, we're going to have to go from 278,000 where we're at now to 614,000. So we're not looking at a 200,000 dollar jump, we're looking at a 340,000 dollar jump. Now, you sit there and say, what is, you know, how does that reflect back through? You know, then again, you know, we know all that money is going straight to our library for support and that, you know, the library revenues, again, are up over a million dollars. So.
And the, and I hate to belabor that point, but in this case, the cost to the taxpayer, we had 332 and, um, and, uh, 278 in the previous, which was your 6, uh, 611 about.
Right.
So the cost to the taxpayer in 1A and in 2B
They, they actually should be the same.
They're, they're identical, but one is paid partly here. One of, one of them, the money goes away, and the other one, it all stays here.
Right, if, if, if you look at those, if you look at the, the two scenarios, under 1, the cost to our taxpayers is the exact same amount, it depends upon where it's going. Under 1A, the library's getting 722,000. Under 2B, they're getting 1,500, you know, some thousand.
Right.
And it's simply because, you know, the residents of the city are not paying into the county because we're only getting so much back from the county. So, you know, we're being more proactive in directing where that money is coming from. The question is, how do you get that, you know, that quantity of money?
Yeah, the sad part is already being paid in these, both of these scenarios.
Right. So, I mean, if, if you look at it, and this is a little bit cryptic, I couldn't do exactly what I wanted, but this really looks at the four scenarios.
So, is there a third option that we could, where we could see if the county is willing to roll back to 70 percent? Are they, is it even an op, is it an option to roll back if the county is willing to do it?
Be up to the county.
They voted to raise it.
Right.
Right, but you never know. Things can change.
I don't think that was, I don't think that's an option, but possibly it is.
But in that scenario, if we, they roll back to 70 percent, it changed some of the numbers. But then again, we're subsidizing, as city residents, we're subsidizing people that take books out of our library by 30 percent. Isn't that what you said to begin with?
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, if, if you, if you go through this chart, uh, I think it's going to be, you know, reinforce the point you're making exactly.
Okay.
But if you look at the two, at the columns, the columns represent the four scenarios. The blue is what our local levy is, the green is the county levy. The total of the two is what the taxpayers of the city of Hudson are paying. So you can see, you know, the first two options, you know, 1A and 1B are roughly the same. 2A and 2B are roughly the same. But then you look at what happens to the funding of the library. Now, granted, under 1B, that presumes that all the member libraries increase that, so the spike may not be as high. But, but you see what happens by, if there is a way to be, you know, to raise enough money to become exempt, it really does, those funds by going directly to the library will help increase its funding. Where if we are not exempt, the li, the library's, you know, funding is limited by what we can give them plus, you know, what's coming from the county library, Act 150, whatever you want to call it, which is based upon circulation times cost of circulation. So in here, the, the yellow is kind of in, in both of these scenarios is more the bridge as to what we have to overcome to get up to the point where our library would receive the benefit of the taxes that the residents are paying.
Right, and we need a, a referendum to make the yellow happen, is that correct?
You would either need a referendum or you would need to find that amount of cut somewhere else in the budget.
Okay.
I am in no way, um, before I make this statement, I'm in no way proposing this, but as part of the analysis, what happens if the library just goes away? We just don't have a library. And again, I'm not proposing that, but it's part of the financial analysis. What would happen then?
Wouldn't we have to pay the 617, but it all goes to the county?
What you would end up doing then is, if you look at that scenario, if you shut down the library, I have not put numbers to this scenario at all, but I mean, really what would happen is, you say, where are your, where, where are the residents of the community going to go? Uh, those that happen to go to Stillwater across the river, I mean, you know, there's probably, you know, nothing that's going to happen. They go to River Falls or Roberts or Somerset. You know, what's going to happen is we're going to be sharing in a portion of the county library levy. And, you know, chances are, it's going to be, you know, just because we have the largest portion of the value of the county within this community, you know, we're going to be paying on and beyond the cost per circ for our residents, we're going to be paying for a lot of other, you know, communities in the county. But it would be to, you know, any, any cost would be funded through the county library levy, assuming that circulation was, uh, you know, in, in St. Croix County.
It would seem to me that, looking at your last slide, we'd still end up paying the, the full load for the county somewhere less than 611, but somewhere in that, but it would come out of the county levy instead of the city levy. Am I close? Because if you look at the circulation.
It's all based on circulation.
Yeah.
Whether or not.
Whether or not we're going to have as much circulation if we didn't have a library, here is a, I don't know if we can answer that question.
Well, we can make the assumption.
We sound a little bit, but it'll be close.
One thing too with a referendum, that has to be an annual referendum.
Referendum has to be annual?
You have, well, or you could, sometimes you have referendums where they say for the next ten years or five years, but it isn't automatic that you can continue to do it, you have to get approval.
Okay.
Any more questions for Neil? Well, what's what's the council's?
John, could you go back to camera, please? Thank you.
Would you like to hit, go back to finance? Should we keep it in the council situation? What do you want, what do you want to do, folks?
I I'd recommend we keep it with council.
I agree.
Yeah.
All right. Do we want to keep, because it's such an important issue, do we want to keep it as a separate item? And or do we want to keep it at our council meetings? What's your, what's your preference?
I'd recommend keeping it separate. I think there's a lot of material and there's a lot of things involved in it, and it just requires a separate discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, so my my understanding is, we have to have, we got to, we got to try and do this in a reasonable amount of time. There's no rush as far as having to do something within the next two weeks or month, or I think it's by budget time. We would, we would like to have this done before, way before budget time.
I think one of the changes that's going to happen as a result of this is, we're going, you know, we're going to have to either by letter, by resolution, or the council takes some action of each municipality is going to have to certify for the county and provide the documentation that they are entitled to be exempt. So, you know, we are going to see that change, that the county is not going to.
I think that's July first. Is that when he, I think the county had sent out some information, by July first? I don't know the exact date.
Yeah, there's, you know, I don't think we, you know, we can do that, but I think we need to get, we'll need to get them that information, you know, after our budget is set.
But that was signed off on for this year. We were, right, I mean, we were led to believe we were exempt.
Right, we are, we are exempt for taxes being paid in two thousand twelve. However, you know, the the real issue is what's going to happen for taxes paid in two thousand thirteen.
So, we don't have to pay this year, oh?
That's my understanding.
That was suggested at the library meeting that we had, that we had to pay this year.
My understanding from corporate counsel of St. Croix County is that we do not.
July first.
Yep. But that could change.
Randy said July first is the date.
It's July first.
Yep.
Just as background, if they knew that it was here, I wasn't here at the time, what was the logic in making it an exempt library at the time we entered into the joint agreement? Does anybody know what the logic behind that was? What what was the reasoning for doing that?
When you say exempt library, I guess I'm.
But why did we go to exempt status when we formed a joint library?
You wouldn't have, the the exemption from the county library is really something that's supposed to be done annually. Where you, you know, on an annual basis, you have to sit there and say, prove to them, and there's a, you know, it's a, it's a formula. You know, do you meet the requirements that's set forth by state statute to be exempt or not? And it's something the county should have been doing on an annual basis and having each community, you know, take, and, you know, you know, an affirmative step, saying, yes, we are, or no, we're not. And that should be the trigger then for the county, either to levy upon the residents or the property owners in that community or not.
But but you have to apply for that exemption.
Yes, you do.
So, there was an intentional action taken to apply for an exemption when the joint library was formed. And I just wanted to know, why was that a better method of funding?
I don't know if it was done when the library was formed, because it's done on an annual basis. And I think the county was relying on the annual report of the library.
The joint library was formed in order to keep funding here and not to disseminate and spread it throughout the county. It was intended to.
Yeah, it wasn't so much a discussion of exempt or non-exempt. It was a desire by the member communities to direct their library, their tax dollars to the library those communities used, which was, for the most part, Hudson.
Okay, so it'd keep the, keep the dollars within the communities.
Correct.
So, counsel, what other information would you like to see? I know we have some issues that we're going to have to deal with with our partners on what's going to happen with them. And they're, they're meeting too and explaining it to their boards, figuring out what their choice may be. And again, you know, one of the options will be at possible of the, to dissolve our joint library.
Now, if we were to go that route, would we, it would, in a sense, become, and essentially, we would have to budget for the library, because I don't think anybody here is interested in closing the library. But we would, in essence, create another department for the city to to budget for. And then go through that, dissolve in the joint library committee.
Correct.
Well, there would be, the library under state statute is governed by a library board in terms of operating the library. The city controls the finances, if it were just a city library.
A municipal library.
Correct, so you'd still have a library board with it, that's how it was before.
To oversee operations, specifically without a department, well, the department head would be the director.
But there would be a joint, I mean, a library board that would make decisions, be responsible for budgeting and so forth.
Including a capital wish list.
Just like we do now.
Yes.
So, it strikes me that we would cut our options in half if we knew the tendencies of our partners. If 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 they're not interested in in keeping the joint library together, that seems like something we should find out sooner rather than later. It limits our options. We should, we should find out what their interest is in maintaining the joint library or disbanding it. There's no point in us weighing all four options if we don't have their.
How about, how about this, this particular body? What's your options? What's your feeling about it? Disband it or keep it together? What what's your feeling?
The the purpose, one of the concerns I have with disbanding it is that the capital cost falls on the city. So, our future expenses could be much larger if we disband it than they are as a joint library. So, we're taking on a bigger financial burden if we do that, at least on the surface, it appears that way.
Let's ask the question about, we're raising capital, we raise, we did raise capital or, you know, to build the building. The next capital would, capital, raising capital would be to purchase books or put in, you know, shelving or do upgrades to the building. Many of those in the past has been, those funds have been raised by the Friends of the Library and other boards, right? So, if we decided to put a second elevator in the building, that would be a cost to us as a city. I guess, I don't want to be gen- I don't want to generalize it, so I ask, what kinds of capital we'd be looking at that we need to cover in the future? Then we can say, well, yeah, that's a lot, or is it not a lot? Because we're at a point now where we have the building and we have, well, basically where we are, what kinds of capital are we talking about?
Well, I guess I I would say that right now, there's a rent figure of one twenty-six.
One twenty-six.
That's operating, though.
Right, but that'll be, that comes back to us then. I mean, that's all ours then. And that really is, is paying for the building. I mean, when, what the rent is, is trying to pay for the building. We put two point five million dollars out to buy the building, the city put it out.
Yep.
And that rent figure is operating expenses, so that every of our partners will pay, help pay for that building. The acquisition of that building.
The two dollars circulation cost, is that a standard number created by the, by the county, or is that a number that we put on it?
That's, if you look at it, you know, each year, the library director, you know, does report to, you know, to the Department of Public Instruction. And it's really, what did you, what did you expend during the year? How many books did you circulate? So, each individual library is going to have a different number. And I think a lot of times, if you look at a smaller library, you know, just to keep the doors open, and, you know, when you think of a community, you know, and I I think I've used the analogy of the village dresser. Uh, you know, eight, eight, nine hundred people, you know, you have one full-time person in the village dresser to keep their, one full-time equivalent, to keep their library open. Well, obviously, their, you know, cost per item is going, probably going to be much higher than it is here.
So, that's back to exactly my point. I assume that the operating cost of the building, the cost operate the building, a hundred and twenty thousand is included in that two dollars.
Yes.
So, the number of hours that we're open, the number of people that we employ, all go into that two dollars. And we've worked very, very hard to keep it at two dollars, right? So, where was I going with this thought?
I think you may be thinking that it may not be, the capital cost may not be as scary as that that we might imagine.
True, and I, it's the capital cost, but then also going back to the operating costs. The a hundred and twenty thousand that they pay, yes, is in rent, but it's, comes back to us in the two dollars as a part of the operating cost, refunding back the building or paying for the operations of the building.
But I think, I think when you look at that, it's paying for the, you know, when you look at what comes back in the way of operating costs, because we're only getting, you know, seventy-nine thousand dollars from the county based upon circulating, you know, thirty-five thousand volumes. So, what portion of the, you know, of that hundred, hundred thousand dollars? You know, if you look at it, you know, if our cost operating the library is, let's say, eight hundred thousand and a hundred thousand of its rent, so that's an eighth of it. So, of the seventy-nine that we get back, probably, you know, call it eighty, you know, ten thousand dollars of that is going to pay for the building.
Didn't quite follow you there.
You know, I I guess, I guess the point is, you know, when you say when we're getting the money back, if, you know, if a, if an eighth of our operating costs, so one eighth of the two dollars and forty-one cents is our cost operate the building.
Oh, and then you're going back to the seventy-nine thousand. I was thinking.
Exactly, because that's what we're getting back from the county.
And I was thinking in the later scenarios, where if we're fully funded.
Okay.
Because from a selfish standpoint, I'd rather my, have my dollars stay here in Hudson than go away, you know.
So, capital cost can be covered through fundraising?
If it's our library?
It's our library, okay, so if capital cost could be covered by fundraising, if it's our library, and we would control then the capital outlay budget for that, correct? Then we could, we would control that budget, right, the capital budget if?
Not, you know, there is, the state statute is pretty specific about donations to the library. A donation to the library is in, is in the control of the library board.
Correct.
It is not within the, you know, control of the municipality.
Okay, so we would take on the capital cost, but we don't control the capital budget? Or we do control the capital budget?
Don't control the don- use of donated money, money that's donated to the library.
But we can, we can, if we're have, if we have a say in the capital budget, my, what I'm leading towards is, if there's something that we feel we don't, we don't want, if it can't be funded through the fundraising money, we don't have to, we don't have to get it. And my point is that the capital budget can be controlled through fundraising, if the money's not there through fundraising, we just don't get it.
Correct, if there was a request for a hundred thousand dollars with the new volumes, it wasn't in the city capital budget, and they couldn't fund it outside the city capital budget, it would not get funded.
Right, leading to my point of, that part of the budget can be funded solely through fundraising if we choose to only spend, let them spend, or allow the spending to happen through the fundraising, and you get what I'm saying.
Yep.
So, Mr. Mayor, your question was about.
Where do you want to go next?
Spanning or, you know, I, as much as I'd like to keep the joint library together, I don't know that we can do that under scenario one B. I mean, I I, obviously, we need to hear from our partners, but I think it's unlikely they're going to, to agree to that. Those are huge increases for them that significantly impact their budgets.
Okay.
One A, I think, is still an option, if we keep the joint library together. I just feel like we need that discussion with our partners sooner rather than later. Because, like I said before, it'll narrow our choices down. We can't force them to stay part of the joint library.
And we can't make them leave unless.
And we can't make them leave, so it seems to me that that discussion should be held soon.
Okay.
I agree somewhat with you too, Laurie, but Neil, I would like to see a possible referendum number, percentage of what we'd have to go for. Is that possible for you to project out?
We, you know, based upon rough dollars, we probably could do that in terms of what it would cost per person.
I'd like to see that on the two options, too.
This, again, may be a little bit out, out there, but what are the implications of approaching River Falls and asking them to join a joint library with us and the other communities?
They have a library. They have a library.
I know they have a city library, I'm saying, let's join together, let's make it one big library. Let's, let's all join it together and make one big library out of it.
Big happy family.
What are the implication, I know what the implications of that even are, but it's, it's out there.
They're in two counties, though, aren't they? How does that work?
I don't, I don't know.
Yes, they are.
Are they in two counties?
They're in St. Croix and here's Congress.
Well, from a regular funding standpoint, two A looks like a, because the county doesn't have a levy limit, is that correct? They're exempt?
Correct, correct.
So, the municipal library, not exempt, has a fair amount of merit, at least from what I'm seeing, or just shooting from the, the examples here. So, I guess I'm with everyone else in like, let's figure out what the other partners are willing to do, but I mean, from a long-term standpoint, having the county tend to kind of, you know, regulate what's going on seems, well, it seems easier without us having to go to referendum all the time and muck around with our budget either, when we might not have the additional funds. Plus, that actually raises the library budget some. So, I don't know, that's just what I'm observing here.
Two A.
Two A, correct.
If you go back to one B for a second, you know, we're, we're, our partners have exactly the same question to ask. They're going to ask the question, do I give my money to the county, or do I keep it with my local library? They're going to have exactly the same question to ask. They're going to be sitting here with the same numbers going, okay, do I stay with the joint library board and underfu- or, you know, fund it so, so some of it comes here and some of it goes there? If I'm representing my, representing my constituent and say, okay, I got, you got, I got two choices for you. Either half your money goes to the county and doesn't buy new books and things here or, you know, operate this, or a hundred percent of your money comes here. As a resident, I'm going to look at it and go, why wouldn't I choose to have a hundred percent of my money come to my local library?
Can I answer that question? Because that money that you're increasing is coming from your tax levy, and that means that you have roads that aren't going to be repaired. That money's coming from somewhere in their budget, whereas it's not counting from the, it's not counting toward the county tax levy. You're taking that money from somewhere else in the budget, so, yeah, you can say it's going to the Hudson Joint Area Library, but it's coming from somewhere. And so the question you have to ask people is, would you rather have it go there than police? Would you rather have it go there than EMS? That's, I mean, that's really the big difference is, you know, in one B and two B, you're looking at, you know, large impacts on local levy limits.
I would think also, for example, the Town of Hudson, a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars is their contribution. If they, if they no longer got to pay that to the library, their levy limit, it just went up by a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Now, they can do with that what they want, they can fix roads, do whatever they want with it, if they so desire. That the, the people, the taxpayers get hit twice then with the county levy levy limit plus the hundred and eighty-three thousand that they have available. It's very, for us, we don't have that option, because we have, we have to maintain the library. We don't have it in our budget. We can't just go away. We have that, we have the building, we have the library, if it's a municipal library.
But you get, you get back to that question about, if the question is posed to the citizens to say, which, and 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 I I get your point that you're going to try to make a choice, but we're, we're saying that we've got, let's use the two hundred and forty thousand for a moment. You got two hundred and forty thousand you need to continue to raise. You ask the citizens, do you want that two hundred and forty thousand to go to a different community, or do you want it to come here? We're asking you to raise the levy limit so that we can make that money, the same money you're going to spend, come back here. It's in addition to our budget, not in, cutting away from our current budget. That's the question you're, you would be asking the people. So, I don't think you're taking away from doing roads, you're asking, please allow us to bring this money home to our library.
You're saying with a referendum?
Correct.
Okay.
Because that's the only way they can do it. That's the way anybody can do it.
Right.
Or cutting in the other side. There is no.
But if you, I, I, if I follow your scenario there, a hundred and eighty-three thousand for roads, but the, the citizen is also getting hit again for another hundred and thirty, so they're really getting taxed twice.
Correct.
So, yeah, it, it's easier on the budget, but it's harder on the person.
Correct, that's the point. Exactly the point. All right, anything else?
Does it make sense to have a similar type presentation with our partners or not?
I can sure talk to them and see if they're interested.
I mean, they're all talking about their budgets, but.
I think we have one of them here tonight, maybe two. Dan, quit looking the other way.
They'll need to.
Ray's here.
I mean, they'll need to go to their boards.
Yes.
It's a board decision.
Right.
And I guess I'll, I can, I'll contact them and set up a time and we can talk.
I don't know if anyone else sees it differently, but it just seems like that's a question we have to answer before we.
No, that should be the first step.
They, they do need to make a decision so that it helps us make ours.
Right.
Well, I think we need to make a decision also. I mean, I, I, I don't think we have to wait for them to make a decision. decision. I think, I think, let's, let's take this stuff, information home, you know, we had it beforehand, and let's take a look, and if you have any other questions, we can, we can certainly meet again, there's no rush. We can, we can do this every other week if we want, or, again, we can do it part of our board meeting. I know you'd, you'd suggested that we have separate meetings.
You could also do finance at five-thirty, have a special meeting between six and seven, and then start from there.
I think I'd prefer doing it that way, and save some money.
Save a day.
Yeah, and save some money.
And I guess, my point is that, you know, it depends on if, you know, we go to one B or two B, based on what our partners decide, you know, which, which of those two options, and granted, we could make a decision outside of theirs as well, but it'd be good to know.
Or one A or two A, right? I mean, it just depends on.
And our partners might be waiting to see what we do.
Well, just to reiterate, the referendum is not a, it's not automatic, it has to happen on a regular basis.
You would either have to do it every year, or would have to specifically say in the referendum question for the tax years, two thousand thirteen through two thousand twenty-two.
It has to pass next time.
Or, or it could be an ongoing, you could, you could set up the referendum saying, an ongoing levy of X amount of dollars.
But mightn't it be a different amount? I mean, we don't know from year to year-
That would be the, that would be the difficult part.
Right.
How much it's gonna be.
All right. Clear as mud?
Mr. Mayor, do you have a question?
You can have a question, we may not answer it.
Oh, I understand. Is it a fair characterization, say that you are, you will fight to now keep this library healthy?
For us?
Yeah.
The council? Absolutely. It's a very much of a community asset for us.
I think so, too, when you consider the big picture, people from Hudson.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Anything else? All right.
I have a question.
Uh, sir? Okay, one more question, we'll allow one more question, but we're not gonna be here all night. Yes, sir?
Yes, I understand that. I wonder if you're planning on having, at some point, before too long, since people eventually will be asked to make a decision based on mayor wording of a referendum item, you're gonna have some kind of open discussion, so that all these interested people can ask questions?
Absolutely, in fact, we'll have as many as we need. In fact, I think we should have as many as people wanna come, and we'll have them, we'll have them weekly if you want. So, we'll have information, and you can ask all the questions you want, and provide input, cause that comes up with the best solution, if everybody puts their input in. You're welcome. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Neil, good job.